Okay, good night. We're good to go.
Okay, everybody's on board, so let's go call the meeting to order. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic, for which we stand. The Constitution, the Constitution, under God, in this book, liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody good? Yeah. Okay, Megan, would you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Cussera?
Here.
Trustee Lautner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
Trustee Seidel?
Here.
President Siffio?
Here.
A quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Moving on, public participation. I know I have one email, but it's not an agenda-related item. Is there any public on the, on the call?
Um, hi, I'm here. Hi. Oh, hi. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
Jim.
Hi. Hi, my name is Valerie Deppa. I live on fifteen hundred block of Robin Hood. Uh, I sent an email yesterday. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about that, or if that's what you're referring to.
Well, it's not, Belle, but since you've started, let's go ahead and get it done. Go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. Um, yeah, longtime listener, first-time caller here. So, um, so, um, I, I live up at the corner of Robin Hood and Twenty-Sixth Street, over on where it curves back toward, um, Finsbury, toward back toward the, uh, Forest Preserve where the new construction is built. And so, for, I've been here fourteen years, and for fourteen years, I've constantly thought to myself, you know, I really wish that there was a stop sign, um, in front of my house on the corner of Twenty-Sixth or on the corner of Finsbury and Robin Hood. And so, I thought, you know, no time like a national pandemic to bring it up to the board, um. But, you know, with everybody being home and everybody being out and about, and I have three young children who have all learned to ride their bikes up the sidewalks and so on and so forth. Um, it's just, it, it, it makes me cringe. It makes me nervous every single time they get on their bicycles to try to cross the street to get to either the school bus or to the sidewalk to get on their, you know, to ride their bikes or rollerblade or whatever. Because that curve is a really long, big stretch of street, and people really come down there at a pretty decent speed. And it's not easy to see if kids are crossing, or anybody's crossing for that matter, and without a pause. It just, it makes me very nervous. So, I thought I would bring it up to the vote.
Thank you, Belle, and thank you for sending the email, too. That helps out a lot. Um, I'm gonna turn it over. We have Chief Consulate with us and Julia, our village manager. So, Julia, do you want to start with the process for this type of, uh, concern?
Certainly, Mr. President. So, yes, it's not unusual to get a request for a four-way stop sign or an additional stop sign with the village. Typically, we look at, um, each of these issues individually against a set of standard, uh, criteria. And we look at, uh, the particular area, and we talk with the resident, uh, to be able to understand what they're observing. And then, uh, the police department works with the village engineer. In this case, it's Mark Volk. Uh, so, we will bring those two folks, the police chief and Mark Volk, together to take a look at, uh, the traffic count and, uh, what is happening in that area and get a response back to the resident. But it starts with, uh, talking with the president and, and a telephone number, so we can have that conversation. And then, we can kind of go from there to collect data, uh, and get a response back.
Chief, any additions? Chief Consulate?
Yeah, just to echo what, uh, Julia said, um, you know, there's a couple of things that we need to do. Um, accident review, speed study, uh, engineering, pedestrian, and traffic count study. Uh, we need to review the MUTCD standards, and then, of course, a legal review with case law. Um, so, there's a couple of steps that we need to do, but you did the first step by notifying us of your concern. And, uh, we take all concerns very seriously, uh, and we will definitely look into it.
Thank you so much.
Mark, can you come on?
Yeah, um, yeah, we can certainly put out, um, you know, traffic count, traffic counters at that location and, uh, just see what the traffic is on all, all four legs of that intersection.
Thank you, Mark. Belle, thank you for, for bringing this to our attention, and we'll get on it and get back to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Julie, have your number?
I will send it over to Julia. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Belle.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Belle.
Oh, my pleasure.
Okay, moving on.
Exciting stuff. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Belle. Okay, consent agenda. Megan, will you do the consent agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. Uh, one, approval of minute executive session, March tenth, twenty twenty. Village Board work session, April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Two, action fiscal year twenty twenty police pension contribution motion to transfer up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to the police pension fund for fiscal year twenty twenty. Three, action motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. And four, action motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and the next village board meeting with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the board of trustees at its next meeting.
Our motion to present the, uh, agenda, presented the consent agenda?
That is.
Second. Megan, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Three, trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, moving on, village managers' report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have one item to report on this evening. That is regarding the CARES Act funds for ambulance transport for COVID symptomatic patients. Uh, it's an update and to answer any questions from the board. It, it is a little bit complicated, and it's, uh, there's a lot of information coming in on this. So, I'm going to take it a little bit slow and answer any questions that the board may have. Uh, village staff would like to proceed with accepting the CARES Act funds for ambulance transport. And we want to make sure, uh, that we answer any questions or concerns. As part of the CARES Act legislation, the federal government distributed funds to help cover the cost of EMS transport for those folks who have COVID nineteen symptoms. And we received a check of about sixteen thousand dollars for this type of, uh, coverage. And as a provider, to accept these funds, we have to do three things. We have to accept the terms and conditions. We have to provide reporting, pretty typical. And we cannot charge for balance billing. In other words, the CARES Act funds for ambulance transport is designed to cover the out-of-pocket costs, provide aid to those patients with COVID symptoms. And here's where it gets complicated, so bear with me. Our village utilizes balance billing, which means that we continue to bill the patient if their insurance or Medicare does not cover the cost. And not every village has balance billing, but we do. And what this means is that we continue to collect for the cost of the transport above what private insurance provides and above what Medicare pays, because Medicare only pays eighty percent of the total allowable Medicare rate that we charge. But what this means is, if we accept the CARES Act funding, which is already in our account, and if we do nothing, we've accepted the terms and conditions. But if we accept the CARES Act funding, which is balance billed, except for Medicare supplemental insurance, there could be a point to where those funds that cannot collect under balance billing exceeds the CARES Act funds we have received. This is possible. So, what does that mean? On average, balance billing equates to about two hundred dollars per transport. That's on average. Three cases different. So, the CARES Act payment covers about eighty transports, eighty in total. So, if we exceed eighty transports or so, then we could be losing these monies from what we otherwise receive without participating in the CARES Act program. So, why do we take the money? From a public policy perspective, these are federal funds that benefit the COVID symptom patients as they cannot be balanced billed for copays or anything not covered by insurance. If we don't take the money, these federal dollars would not come back to our community, and we will balance bill these patients for amounts not covered. So, taking these funds, while it may financially impact us, depending on how many transports we have, it benefits the community. This issue is very fluid, as I mentioned before, and more information is forthcoming all the time. Recently, we found out that under the Act that we can still balance bill Medicare supplemental coverage, so that's good. Additionally, we just received word just before this meeting that more funding may be available. So, there are still unknowns. We don't know how much funding we will receive beyond the sixty thousand dollars. And we don't know for how long the period, uh, the funding is applicable for. And we don't know how many COVID symptoms these people have. Nonetheless, staff is recommending that we proceed forward in taking these federal funds for this program to offset any impacts for these particular patients for their copays or their, uh, out-of-pocket expenses. So, if there's any questions or concerns, but that's our intent to handle.
Julia, we've had, I'm sorry, Julia, we're getting delayed here, so I'm, I'm interjecting, I shouldn't. But we've had twenty cases, so twenty transports already so far?
We've had between twenty and twenty-five transports, uh, combined, that's, uh, positive and suspect combined.
Okay. Um, is it okay if I go through the trustees, then, to see if they have any opinions or, uh, questions for you, Julia?
Sure.
Okay, trustee Messick, any comments?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You asked the, the first question, your question. Um, I guess if you could elucidate, you know, and what we see, or, or, it's hard to predict. I'm looking for a crystal ball, but, uh, I, I think it's a good idea to accept the funds. But, uh, do, are, are we gonna stay on the good side? Do, do we predict we're gonna?
It's really hard to tell. As I mentioned, um, the, these funds should, uh, cover about eighty transports. But say we went one hundred patients over that, so one hundred. So, it's say we got to eighty, and then we had another hundred transports. And, uh, that would have a potential impact on our budget of twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, that's substantial. On the other hand, uh, we're pulling the curtain, so. It, it's a hard call to make. I, I said, we are, I saw an article today, so La Grange was, was the one mentioned. We are way below La Grange and other ones on, on transports or cases, so. Um, I support it, but, yeah, I, I don't expect we'll have, uh, an explosion of transports. But it's, it's, it's scary, because we don't want to impact the budget like for twenty grand, so. Um, overall, I'd support it, but there's a lot of unknowns.
Lot of unknowns, certainly, and that's.
Chief Manager, did you explain anything you want to add before I move on to the other trustees?
Uh, not really. I mean, a couple of quick things. It's, it's a very complex issue, because the estimates are very hard to work with. Larry and Julia worked very diffi- or worked hard with Andre's medical billing. Um, and they can't even provide us real good information. And then, everything's kind of not the norm, you know. A couple of weeks ago, we saw our ambulance transports drop dramatically overall. And whether that'll change in the long run, it's hard to predict. A lot of the, uh, skilled nursing facilities are trying to keep their COVID patients within the walls. A lot of people don't want to go to the hospital, even if they have other symptoms at home. Um, it's really hard to predict. It could change significantly if, you know, i- if everything opens up more. But we don't anticipate that, you know, on a large scale. Then, the second part of this is because the federal government is vague with these funds, uh, it, you know, what if, what if we do get a round two of the pandemic? Is it gonna be less? Is it gonna be more? And are things gonna change how we're handling it? I don't anticipate. I think things will tighten up again as far as transports. But, um, it's a very hard thing to predict. The other side, um, of this, and, and it's all kind of speculation. You know, i- if we're gonna get more funds, that will help out. Um, and if we truly are gonna go back and say, you know, three months from now, hey, you had COVID, we're gonna charge you the extra eighty dollars you still didn't pay us, you know, is, is that worth it? Um, because, you know, we do balance bill. And, and again, the, the secondary insurance is pretty much automatic. It's balance billing, but not quite the same thing. So, is that really the right thing to do? Um, uh, again, I think, and again, it's Julia and Larry really work the most on this. I, I think, and again, it's more, like you said, you're talking to the board and everybody about it here. It's more of a policy issue, but our gut feeling is it makes sense to take the money. We're not sure if we'll come out ahead or behind. And in the long run, are we gonna really be dealing with some of those balance billing on people who have suffered through COVID?
Thank you, Chief. Larry, did you have any comments?
No, I think it's been discussed, everything I, I have to ask.
Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess my fear is the same as what Chief Magos said, is that this happens in the fall or maybe later, because we don't really know when this is gonna stop. So, if this continues for a year, I mean, is that, we, we still have to follow the same protocol, correct? I mean, it, I don't, we don't know what's gonna happen, when this is gonna end. Is that right?
That's correct. A lot of unknowns.
Okay, I don't know. I mean, I'm a little afraid. I understand what the chief is saying, but I'm a little afraid to take it. I don't know. I just, I'm not optimistic about this, so I don't know what everybody else feels. Um, so, it, it's hard for me to say. I'll go with what the board wants to do, but I'm, I'm sort of on the fence here.
Thank you, trustee Zora. Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I was pretty much siding with what Dean was saying until I listened to, uh, trustee Zora. You know, we get hit with the second wave, or this goes south, you know, yeah, maybe down the road, there's more money. Um, I, I would lean with whatever Dean and Julia and Larry come up with at this point.
Okay, thank you, trustee Sheehan. Trustee Seidel?
Um, I'm gonna kind of side with what is said. There's so many unknowns, it's very hard to predict. Um, I'm gonna go with the recommendation of Dean and Julia and Larry, who've been putting a lot of work into this. Um, I'm on the fence as well, but I'm gonna go with staff recommendation on this.
Thank you, trustee Seidel. Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I concur with all of the comments. I don't think ever in my career have we been in a situation where we need to make a decision and we don't really, really know. Um, again, with, um, our chief Magos, uh, and, um, village manager Siffio, um, yeah, I really have to agree with them. Um, trustees or others, um, yeah, I think we're all concerned about this, what, what's gonna happen. Uh, we get so much information from different points of the professional world, as well as the media. Uh, it's really hard, but I, I really hope and believe that, um, and we're gonna talk about some of that later on this evening, with people doing the right things, we're gonna be able to, uh, um, avoid the issues. And, you know, um, our citizens are the ones that are at stake. Uh, I know what budget is. Uh, trustee Messick, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, but again, looking at the overall size of this, um, you know, I, I think we're here for our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Cussera. And trustee Lautner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, question I have is, is there a timeframe associated with this? Or is there an expiration time, or is it open-ended at this point?
From the information that we have, it's open-ended. We're still, we're, there's some talk about assuming it's for the rest of the calendar year. I, we don't feel comfortable saying that. We don't know for sure. Uh, Larry just got information, I think around six o'clock, that there is, um, likely a second round of funding, but it will require quite a bit of, uh, report writing, more than what we've, we would be required for the first distribution. Larry, I don't know if there's any additional information that you have on the second round or the first round in terms of time. But everything that I, I have seen is that it is on schedule.
No, I don't want to talk to you. Doesn't, that's one of the great uncertainties that, in the terms and conditions right now, that it doesn't seem to be any, uh, input into those. Uh, but it does seem like if we want to get additional funding, we're going to have to accept the original funding. So, if we don't accept the first round, I think we might be out of any additional rounds.
I, if I can jump in, I think, and maybe I mistook it, but I think also the question is, on this first round of funding, we have to make a decision soon, right, Larry?
Yeah, within the next week and a half or so. They, they gave us thirty days from the day we got the payment. The payment came the week, I think it was Friday, April tenth, was when we got the payment. Um, and we just learned the conditions of the payments in the last, uh, week.
Now, can I interrupt real quick, Larry? Can we, uh, if we accept this round of money, then the village is planning to apply for additional monies?
That would be the, the, the plan, yes.
Okay, okay.
Trustee Lautner?
Given that, um, you know, I, I would follow staff's recommendation to proceed with it, um, anticipating there will be a second round. I know it will have additional requirements, but I think we should accept it.
Thank you, trustee Lautner. So, Julia, Larry, chief, you've got the recommendation of the board to go ahead and, whatever you guys recommend as far as following through with this?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would note additionally that if more information comes in about this particular, um, funding, uh, from the federal government, we will continue to keep everybody apprised of those developments. It's, it's just, it's changing very quickly, as you can imagine. And the more information we'll find out, we'll make sure that we report that out, okay?
I don't think there's ever a time where we want to refuse money from the feds, but there's always a catch. Anything else, Julia, that you have?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Julia. Okay, moving on to administration commission, trustee Seidel?
Hi, my first report is the administration report. Highlighted our recent and upcoming activities of the administration department. New refuse prices effective April first. Per the village's contract with Lake Shore Recycling Systems, monthly refuge fees increased on April first, twenty twenty. The fees are as follows. Thirty-five gallon refuse senior rate is now nine dollars and one cent monthly price. The thirty-five gallon refuse non-senior rate is thirteen sixty-five. The sixty-five gallon refuse is fifteen seventy-one. The ninety-five gallon refuse is up seventeen dollars a month. The ninety-five gallon landscape and food waste is now at twenty-sixty, and stickers have increased to three oh nine. The next item is the twenty-twenty census. By now, you should have received in the mail your invitation to complete the twenty-twenty census. Please use this time to complete the census online or by phone as directed. For most residents, it will take less than ten minutes. The census will continue as planned, but certain deadlines for response and follow-up have been extended. Please do your part and respond as soon as possible. Now more than ever, it's important that La Grange Park count every resident so we are able to secure the state and federal funding needed for our community. The next item is Rave Smart nine-one-one. The village of La Grange Park, in conjunction with Lyons Township Area Communications Center, is migrating from code RED to the Rave Alert Smart nine-one-one emergency notification system. This migration will take effect May first, twenty twenty. To sign up for emergency alerts, visit the village website at www.lagrangeparkboard. And that concludes, uh, my next item for the administration is suspension of block parties, garage sales, plant sales, et cetera, due to COVID nineteen. The general background, in March, Governor Pritzker implemented a stay-at-home order that went into effect on March twenty-first, and was initially the last until April seventh. On March thirty-first, Governor Pritzker extended the order to April thirtieth. On April twenty-third, twenty twenty, the order was further extended to May thirtieth with modifications. In addition to the governor's rule, the federal government has put in place the President's Coronavirus Guidelines for America, which recommend avoiding social gathering of ten or more people. Agencies at all levels of government are recommending people practice social distancing and maintain at least six feet between themselves and others. In order to adhere to the recommendations and guidance being brought forward at the state and federal level and in the interest of protecting the public health and safety of La Grange Park residents, it is recommended that the village suspend activities that encourage people to congregate or engage in frequent contacts such as block parties, house, apartment, garage, and yard sales, art and craft shows, implant shows, indoor, outdoor, and sidewalk sales. This item is for discussion and action. Staff recommends approval of motion. We make a motion to suspend block parties, house, apartment, garage, and everything, art and craft shows, and plant shows, indoor, outdoor, and sidewalk sales through May thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second. Do we have a motion? A second discussion? Trustee Seidel?
Um, I am for this. You know, obviously, there is a lot going on. You know, it's sad to see this has to be done, but it is definitely necessary for the safety of our residents. So, I am in full support of this.
Thank you, trustee Seidel. Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, trustee Seidel. Um, I really think she said it all when she said, uh, it's a shame we have to do this, uh, but, um, unfortunately, we do. And, um, hopefully, uh, it will end at the end of April, or May, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Cussera. Trustee Lautner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would support this motion as stated and printed.
Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I fully support it. Uh, my question is, so we've had, uh, we had the governor extend the stay-at-home order another thirty days, they're being challenged in court. Uh, so are we on solid footing with this? Uh, or is it under the powers, the Emergency Powers Act that you have used? Are, are we safe doing it on a, on a village level and forget the governor? Because I, I, I do support it. I just want to make sure somebody doesn't take it to court and try and overturn it.
Attorney Keating?
You know, I would say that the, the decision of the judge out of Southern Illinois is gonna be appealed. Uh, I think we're gonna get a quick hearing on the appeal, and we'll have a good idea of where the whole stay-at-home thing sits after that. Um, I think it's likely to go to the Illinois Supreme Court, and I think it's highly unlikely that the Illinois Supreme Court would not support the stay-at-home order. So I think for now, we're, we're fine to do this.
Thank you, Trustee, attorney Keating. Trustee Messick, is there any more comments?
No, 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 sir. As I said, I support it. I just want to make sure we're on solid footing.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Zora?
I support this. No additional comment.
Trustee Sheehan?
Hello?
Okay, I just have two comments, Julia, um, or Amanda. Plant shows indoor or outdoor, what is, that's not the garden that we're gonna talk about? The type of plant sale?
I think that's a great question. I, if, if I may, I would turn it over to Emily, and she can speak to that distinction.
Hi, Emily. Hi, thank you. So let me, um, point out first that, uh, the title of the memo references plant sales, but the motion references plant shows. Uh, so let me just clarify that that's a typo. The language, uh, plant shows comes directly from the zoning code. So these items that are listed in the memo, the block parties, house, apartment, garage, and yard sales, art and craft shows, all of those items, uh, those are terminology that came directly from the zoning code. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we're mirroring it that exactly. Um, but the, the craft shows and plant shows that's listed in the zoning code is not the same thing as garden centers or landscape centers. Those would be, um, shows that individuals might hold, or organizations might hold, um, but not, not a typical, uh, trisness, like we're going to be discussing with Clover. So Clover's would not, Clover's individuals would not fall under this provision.
Okay, thank you, Emily. And the other, the other comment I would make is that, um, Julia, would this be something, say that we had a problem and we were the board, what's meeting for another two weeks, and we had a problem with congregation of individuals because of a block party? It would be something that would fall under the emergency, um, state of emergency? So it gives us the authority to move right away if we had to, uh, a situation like this?
I, I, I would, um, I would, uh, defer to attorney Keating on that, but it is my understanding and reviewing a lot of the executive orders that have come out of various villages, um, the suspension of certain, the zoning code certainly is something that could be exercised under a local state of emergency.
Jim, I missed the first attorney question. This is Kathy. Um, are you saying that if we didn't pass this motion, could you do it two weeks from now if there were a problem? Or are you really talking about enforcement of this order?
If, if we did not do this tonight, and say, this weekend, we had a problem with congregation, I know block party, maybe a yard sale or something, it would give me the authority as the president to invoke emergency, state of emergency, and, and do this, rather than, if we didn't do it tonight, rather than waiting till the next board meeting?
Yes, I think that the better procedure is to adopt the resolution tonight, because if you wait till you have one garage sale or one plant sale where people are congregating, and you shut that one down, and you issue an executive order on a certain date based on one, you know, one of these that you didn't think went right, um, other people who, who got to have them before that time, I think you'd, you'd have a little bit of, um, difficulty explaining to the residents why the full board didn't approve it today.
Okay. And I guess my point, I believe is the point that the point was that if, if we didn't, if this wasn't on the agenda tonight and we had a problem this weekend, it's something that we could invoke?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy. Um, you know, Megan, will you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Launer?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Sidell?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Thank you, Trustee Sidell.
Thank you. That concludes the Administration Report.
Okay, building activities, Mr. Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building, some of the building activities for March 2020, and then I have one item for discussion and action. There were fifty-one permits issued in March compared to forty-eight last March. There have been a hundred and six permits issued so far this year compared to ninety-seven at this point last year. Staff has modified the inspection and permitting process to deal with the COVID-19 issues. Staff continues to be flexible and working through challenges and trying to support residents and contractors with their projects. The new library signs have been installed, one on the wall and the monument sign. A final inspection was conducted from a tone for the outdoor patio, and other upgrades completed over the past year. There are still some remaining items that need to be completed, and they plan to address in the near future. Drive for Fitness has decided to expand the second space at the plaza in Thirty First Street. The previous new Hong Kong space is, they try to finish their initial build-out. Work has begun on replacing the remaining sections of the roof that were not completed last year, and as previously noted, the new building and fire codes were implemented on March first, and things appear to be working out well. And then on to my items for discussion and action. The former Pancake House property located at five hundred thirty-one North LaGrange Road has been vacant for over a decade. The property was acquired in recent years by the adjacent business, Phillips Flowers, and has been on the market ever since. Phillips recently paved the building pad left vacant by the demolition of the Pancake House. The village was approached recently by James Kuno, the owner of Clover's Garden Center, who expressed interest in opening a temporary retail stand at five thirty-one North LaGrange Road. Clover's intends to operate a seventeen-hundred-square-foot greenhouse with additional outdoor display areas. The stand would operate daily from nine AM to seven PM, and would primarily sell vegetable plants, herbs, annuals, and perennial flowers. Currently, the government, the governor, has restricted operations of garden shops to only curbside hickups. The owner of Clover's indicates that he will not open the retail stand until these restrictions are lifted. If modifications are made to the governor's order, which will allow onsite shopping, he would open the retail stand as soon as permissible. Regardless, he is seeking approval of a temporary use permit so that he is ready to open the retail stand when the regulations are modified or lifted. The owner has provided a detailed outline in our package of business operations. He has also provided supplemental information regarding how he will accommodate health, safety, and social distancing guidelines in the attached email. The use is, the use is regulated by Section one ninety-three, point one ninety-five of the zoning code, which addresses temporary uses and structures. More specifically, Section one ninety-three, point one ninety-five C nine regulates temporary retail stands allowing for them in commercial zoning districts but limiting their size to two hundred and fifty square feet. Section one ninety-three, point one ninety-five A three requires village board approval for temporary uses not specifically listed. Staff recommends approving the temporary use permit for Clover's Garden Center to permit the installation of a temporary greenhouse and outdoor display area. I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary use permit for Clover's Garden Center to allow for construction of a seventeen-hundred-square-foot temporary structure and outdoor display area for seasonal retail sales to be occupied on or after May first, 2020. We remove no later than July thirty-first, 2020.
Second. Motion, a second discussion. Trustee, uh, Zora?
So I have a couple of questions for staff. I know they said they wanted to open May first. Uh, I don't see that as being possible unless they have, have they already submitted a permit? Do we know?
They, I, I don't believe they have submitted a building permit. Um, I think the owner understands that May first is not likely, but because the governor did modify the stay-at-home order beginning May first, which allows for garden centers and landscaping centers to permit onsite shopping, um, that's the date that staff put in the memo, because that's the first date that he could be open. Um, but it's not likely he'll be open that day. Um, I think he wants to open as soon as possible after May first, um, and I think the building department will probably work with him to get that permit issued. It's a pretty straightforward permit in terms of the type of structure that he's building.
So, uh, my other question is, um, how will this affect Ace and Jewel? Since we issue a temporary garden permit every year for Jewel, I mean, as much as we all love another business coming in, I don't want to hurt the businesses that are here right now that might already be struggling, and then we throw something at them to make it worse.
Certainly, um, it could compete with Jewel. Jewel has not submitted their application for their garden center yet. Um, they initially told us they think they're going to, then more recently, they said that, um, they do think they-
Can you tell them that he can't be on the call?
Um, so I think there will be some-
Oh, you can't talk about cheese?
Um, with them, for-
In Indiana, I can talk about, not a gender-related item.
... sales tax from the sales that Clover's generate. Um, so I don't think that the, the competition will be that significant, because Clover's apparently has, um, somewhat of a unique market in terms of the, the materials and the plants that they carry.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Uh, I don't have any other comments. I, I think, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just want to make sure we're not jeopardizing existing establishments in our village by allowing something else similar to come in.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions on this before I make a decision. Uh, what are they gonna do as far as, are they gonna have outhouses? It's gonna be open ten hours a day. How is this staff gonna use the, uh, facilities?
So, um, Clover's has an agreement with Phillips Flowers, because Phillips Flowers obviously owns the property. Um, they see having, uh, Clover's open up a temporary center as being beneficial to them, even though there is a little bit of competition between the two. But they think it will bring, um, extra traffic to their store. They like that it will add some activity and vibrancy to the site. Um, so they are anxious to have Clover's open. Clover's, uh, will be permitted to use their facilities, not only their restrooms, but also they will be hooking up to Phillips Flowers' water for the watering of their plants and things like that. So, um, they'll be working very closely with Phillips during the time that they're occupying that site.
All right, thanks. My other question, you know, this is pretty, any other time I would support this, but running a garden hose for this thing, and we don't know about the germs or contamination, and for that, I have, uh, I'm skeptical about approving this for this summer.
So they do have, um, sorry, sorry to cut you off, but-
No, that's okay.
The, uh, Phillips Flowers does have a backflow device. Um, our public works department did confirm that. Um, they're going to be using the water only for the purpose of watering plants. It's not going to be water that they would be, um, that their, their staff would be consuming onsite or anything like that. It would simply be for the purposes of watering the plants. So, um, I don't think we have any concerns about contamination with the water anymore so than we would with, uh, any type of hose use, outside hose use.
Yeah, I would think that. I was just more concerned about the washing of the hands and keeping it sanitary.
That's a good point. Um, that is why we did go back to, uh, Clover's and ask them to provide us some additional detail on sanitation. Um, so they are going to have wipes and hand sanitizer available. They're going to be, um, very diligent about making sure they are keeping things clean and keeping their employees safe. And certainly, we will be pushing that with them as well through the permit process.
Yeah, as it stands right now, Mr. President, I, I would not support this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Trustee Sidell?
Uh, I'm gonna kind of concur with Trustee Sheehan's comment. Um, I'm also on the fence and leaning towards not supporting it. As much as bringing new businesses is great, um, and something we need. Obviously, that space has been vacant for ten years. Um, I think the timing is bad. Um, I will agree with all the previous concerns. I am concerned that it will compete with Ace and Jewel, and I do feel like we need to support our existing businesses right now. Um, so I am definitely torn on this item, where as much as new businesses is great, I also think the timing, um, we just need to support our current businesses more right now.
Thank you, Trustee Sidell. Trustee Cussera?
I'm leaning towards no at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I definitely concur with all of, uh, the other trustees', uh, concerns. However, um, I'm very familiar with, uh, with Clover. Uh, for the last probably ten years, I've traveled out to Westmont, uh, and Ogden Avenue to, uh, uh, get plantings for, for the house. I really don't think they compete with, uh, with our Ace Hardware Store or with Jewel. Uh, they have much larger plants. They have kind of different pieces. I, I don't want to call it, um, commercial, but again, it's kind of in between commercial and, and residential. Um, it's a piece, let's, instead of people driving out, and our people included, to Westmont, let's have them come here to, to us. Um, everybody, and believe me, nobody more than me is concerned about the, uh, the COVID-19. Um, and we're talking about Jewel, we're talking about other places. Uh, social distancing than, uh, distance, I'm sorry, social distancing and basemass, uh, for an, or, for a, for a store like this, uh, are no different than, uh, than Ace or Jewel if Jewel decides to, to open up a greenhouse this year. And, um, I mean, that's something that the Clover folks are gonna need to enforce just as Jewel and, and everybody, everybody else does. Um, so I think it's an opportunity for, uh, for another business. Um, if somebody opens up a business in LaGrange for five or six months, I'm sorry, LaGrange Park, um, they're part of LaGrange Park for five or six months, as long as they, uh, support us as we support, uh, as long as we support them. So despite other concerns and the COVID-19 concerns, uh, the COVID-19 concerns need to be taken care of by them. If they're not, I'm sure Chief Con, uh, Conso will take care of that, so I am in favor, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cussera. Trustee Launer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too am concerned about the competition to our current retailers with Jewel and Ace. Um, I do, I am familiar with, uh, Cooley's, and I think that they, they do fit a little bit of a different niche. Uh, obviously, it's a very different niche. Um, I, we, we focused on trying to grow business within the community, and I think it's, you know, overall, I would consider it a good opportunity to, to, uh, do that, not in the long form of, but, um, I'm, I'm really concerned if this president might set, or might, uh, establish a community that we don't necessarily have, or there are really new businesses, I mean, it's a short term here. As I consider the, the, the rest of the city, and both sides of the equation, I'm thinking of the side of supporting it.
Thank you, Trustee Launer. Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I support this. I, I, I concur with, with Trustee Cussera was saying that, uh, they're gonna have to follow the same rules. Any, what we consider essential business now has to follow the same, same, uh, hygiene rules, the masks, the thing, bringing the products out. As far as competing against our, our existing businesses, um, I'm a capitalist. I don't think the village should be picking winners and losers. Uh, if they choose to open up and they follow the rules, and I, I don't think there's, there's issues with the water, as was stated. It's gonna be strictly for watering the plants. And, uh, they, they follow the hygiene rules with the masks and, and the wipes and all, um, I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Okay, Megan, call the roll? Okay, Megan, call the roll.
Okay, uh, Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
No.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yep.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
This is a hard one, but it looks like it's already passed, so I'm just gonna say yes.
Okay, the motion, uh, passes by a vote of five to one, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Trustee Zora.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Engineering Capital Projects. Trustee Casera? Did we lose Trustee Casera? We must have.
Sounds like it.
I didn't see anybody drop.
I'm sorry. I, I was on mute. Uh, design works for the Thirty First Street Watermain Project is almost complete. Project specifications and detailed cost estimates have been prepared. There's anticipated project can be left for bid in April. Administrative work needed to obtain easements for the water main installation west of Metacris Road is continuing. This will be a separate project scheduled to be constructed in 2021. Second item, Mr. President. This is a tough one to pronounce. Inseal Form Technologies began work on the 2020 sewer line project. The initial phase of the project is the televising of the sewers to be lined. This allows all of the sewer connections to be logged by measuring the distance from the starting manhole, so after the lining process is complete, the connection can be reestablished by cutting a hole in the new liner. All construction activities are expected to be completed by April thirtieth. Last item, Mr. President. Sewer Tech LLC began work on the 2020 sewer cleaning and televising project. Over 10,000 feet of sewers of various sizes will be cleaned. After completion, a contractor will provide videos and data logs of the sewers inspected. This information will be reviewed to determine if any sections of the sewer need point repairs or are good candidates for sewer lining. Work on the project is expected to be completed by April thirtieth. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, two reports this evening from Public Safety Area, there's the police, uh, department, um, before through March of twenty twenty. Total number of crimes this year is slightly lower than last year at this time, with seventy reported this year compared to seventy-six last year. Traffic enforcement is at nine hundred and fourteen total tickets issued through March of 2020. Overall police activity is slightly lower to last year with 2,024 total incidents reported through March of 2020 as compared to 2,233 total incidents through March of 2019. The Foot Patrol Program will begin for all shifts May first and continue until October first, weather permitting. Please follow us on our social media accounts as we frequently use these platforms to update the community on response procedures while the COVID-19 situation remains active and fluid as well as police department activities and their status. Uh, Twitter account at La Grange Park PD, Facebook at La Grange Park Police Department, and Instagram at La Grange Park PD. And once, uh, again, a friendly reminder about securing one's personal property at all times. Please like your vehicles and your residence, especially during overnight hours. If you're going on vacation, come into the police department during eight thirty AM to, to five PM, Monday through Friday, and fill out a vacation card. When you return home, come back, and you'll see the time that they've checked on your house for you and let us know that you have returned. And from the Fire Department. Through March of 2020, EMS incidents this month totaled 120. Uh, to date, there have been 376 year-to-date compared to 365 year-to-date in 2019. Fire and rescue incidents this month totaled 34. There have been 102 year-to-date compared to 146 year-to, year-to-date last year, or in 2019. Fire Department received our two odd-shaped CPR compression devices. Training took place, and the units were officially placed in service on both ambulances. These will improve the quality of CPR while allowing for EMS personnel to improve patient care during cardiac arrests. Staff conducted the hyperstatic pressure test of the piping for the fire sprinkler system being installed in a new home on the 500 block of North Spring. Our annual inspection testing and maintenance took place on all of our hydraulic rescue tools. PSI contract paramedic, Lado Red- Redina, submitted his resignation as he took a job with Wheeling Fire Department. As such, and due to the pandemic, we conducted an interview for our new contract paramedic firefighter by video conferencing. As a result, we welcomed Ben Carbonara, who began working, uh, on shift in April. Staff responded to a variety and a variety of ways to the pandemic as things quickly changed during the month. Staff worked continuously to obtain additional PPE and change response guidelines to help protect its, protect the staff. Numerous other procedures were implemented to disinfect fire stations and equipment regularly. Staff also participated in and continues to participate in regular weekly calls with various agencies, including the Illinois Department of Public Health, Ameda Healthcare, MABUS, and the Governor's Office, et cetera. And there were two, um, uh, incidents noteworthy for reporting this evening. Um, in early March, there was a response to a vehicle crash at the intersection of Harding and Barnesdale. Our firefighters used hydraulic rescue tools to fit the door open on one of the vehicles, or the jaws of life from what I understand, um, in order to safely remove one of the drivers. And on the twenty-third of March, we responded to a fire in an oven in the 400 block of North Spring. And I'd like to say that's never happened to me, but plastic cookware was being stored inside the oven and began burning when it was accidentally left in while cooking. The fire was quickly extinguished with limited damage. And that concludes my report from the Public Safety Area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. We'll move on to Public Works Committee. Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Winter operations continued in March. Staff mounted fifty-six point four miles of roadway, using a total of six point nine tons of salt, averaging 244 pounds of salt per lane mile. A total of forty-three daytime hours and seven overtime hours were spent on winter operations. DPW repaired five water leaks on main services during the month of March. Crews while filling potholes throughout town finished multiple asphalt patches from water sewer excavations. Fifty-six daytime hours were spent using nearly 12 tons of coal patch. With warming weather, uh, DPW began, began pathway restoration with topsoil and grass seed from excavations over the winter. Street sweeping made its 2020 debut with favorable weather, allowing to make multiple patches throughout town. Seventy-two daytime hours were spent sweeping. Uh, spring tree planting species and locations were finalized. They were planted this week. Uh, Rick, they look great. Uh, tonight I had a couple residents on Community and one on Scottsdale reach out to me. Uh, they're beautiful trees, great selection. Uh, you should be happy with the contractor that we used this year. Uh, due to COVID-19 pandemic, DPW was working two shifts, uh, switched to maintain a healthy workplace with proper social distancing. Um, 275 daytime hours were spent on buildings and grounds and maintenance around public works facility in Village Hall and along Thirty First Street. Eighty-six daytime hours were spent on maintenance of public works equipment and vehicles. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs attending to resident concerns. Over 318 day shift hours and seventeen overtime hours during the month of March were spent on maintenance and repairs of sewer and water mains. Twenty-seven million nine hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. Uh, 1,330 water meters were read in Section Three. Fifty-five monthly accounts, 12 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Five water and sewer inspections, thirteen meter appointments, and 12 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. Ninety-four utility locations were identified fired excavation. Free water mains were repaired along with two service lines. Two hydro modification kits were completed. Four, uh, valve boxes were repaired. Repairs were made. Uh, Director Randy, did you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything else they had, or did you hear anything, any other kudos from our residents?
I have none, not on the trees yet, no.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. President, you had a chance to drive Scottsdale or Community, they look great. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Okay, moving on to Finance Committee. Trustee Messick? Trustee Messick, you gotta turn your mic on, bud.
Sorry, I had a brain fart. Uh, so with the monthly fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue is at ninety-six percent of the annual budget and about $96,000 higher than the prior year. Property tax receipts are about $71,000 higher compared to the prior year. Other local taxes are lower by about $93,300 or 6.5% due primary to the timing of cable franchise fee payments compared to last year as well as lower utility taxes. Licensees revenue is about $7,400 or 2.3% less than last year. Permit revenue is down 29.9% or about $98,000 comp- uh, compared to last year. Most of the decrease is due to the result of lower alteration in addition permit fees compared to last year. Intergovernmental revenue is up over $237,000 or 14.8% compared to last year due to increased state shared revenue receipts. Charges for services are down about $52,500 or 10.8% due in part to lower ambulance fee receipts compared to last year. Fine revenue is approximately $5,300 lower than the prior year. Local ticket revenue is about $100,000 higher due to increased signs. Port revenue is down by nearly $20,000. Miscellaneous revenue is about $40,000 greater than last year due to interest payment in lieu of taxes and new net worth reimbursement. Total general fund expenditures are at 91% of the annual budget and about $404,000 or 5.1% greater than last year. The increase includes $500,000 transferred to the Capital Projects Fund. And there is two action items. Uh, the first one is the, uh, Finance Committee review budget and five-year plan fiscal year 2021. Uh, the background is Finance Committee met on March tenth to review the draft budget dated March third, 2020, and had planned a second meeting for March twenty-fourth to discuss the five-year plan. However, due to the governor's stay-at-home order and social distancing requirements, the second meeting was postponed. In anticipation of fiscal impacts related to COVID-19 pandemic, staff recommended a number of revisions to March third, 2020 draft budget in, in an effort to prepare for greater financial resilience. These revisions, both structural and procedural, were recently discussed at an additionally scheduled Finance Committee meeting held telephonically on April seventh of this year. Uh, revisions reviewed, which are attached, are reductions to program revenues, reduction changes to fund expenditures, suspend any increases to water and sewer rates for a year, conduct a three-month budget review in the July work session and thereafter, as deemed necessary, and five, postpone the renewal deadline for village vehicle stickers until October thirty-first, 2020. Finance Committee supports the measures listed above, and the Village Board reviewed the revised budget at the April fourteenth work session meeting and public hearing. Additionally, just prior to the April fourteenth work session, the Finance Committee went, met one last time to review the draft five-year plan, which was realigned to be consistent with the revised budget. So, public hearing on the twenty, fiscal year 2021 budget was held on April fourteenth at seven fifteen PM. The Village Board discussed the proposed budget at the April fourteenth work session meeting. Action is anticipated for the April twenty-fourth, or it should be twenty-eighth board meeting. The Finance Committee recommended the Village Board consider the following actions, so I'd like to make two motions. The first one, a motion to approve a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 operating village budget. And the second one is to approve the five-year plan fiscal year 2021 through 2024, 25.
Good motion, or a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Trustee Messick?
Um, this, this was well discussed in, in the meeting, well, the Village, uh, the, the public hearing on the fourteenth, and I am full supportive. I, I, I would like to reiterate, uh, staff had to do some important work here, uh, to adjust i- in very uncertain times, but, uh, I think we've made some very good decisions and, and I fully support moving forward this budget.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Zora?
I have no additional comments. I support that.
Trustee Sheehan?
No additional comments, Mr. President. I support the kudos to staff.
Trustee Seidel?
I'm in full support. Thank you to staff and the Finance Committee.
Trustee Casera?
Complete concurment with, uh, all of my fellow trustees. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I support as well. Uh, it's a tough budget, and it was a tough challenge to our staff to, um, have to, to sit back at the timing of this and figure out where it is that we need to go and how we're gonna get there and, and make the recommendations with not a whole lot of time. Um, so fully support, and it's still gonna be tough, but, uh, together I think we can make it. I support.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Uh, the only comments I would make again to staff, Julia, Emily, Larry, all you guys, department heads, um, great job. It's a moving target. I mean, we talked about finances tonight already with the feds coming in and offering some money, so, uh, Trustee Messick as chair and Trustee Casera and Trustee Lotner, good job, um, as committee. So, thank you all for what you've done during hard times like this. So Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Messick? Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan.
All right. One more action item, Mr. President. Uh, this, this is fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendments. So the purpose is to consider amendments to fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Background of the village requires the Board amend the annual, that total expenditures for a department or fund will exceed the approved budget. States authorize the village revise, revise the budget by a two-thirds vote. Following amendments are proposed. General fund program, uh, Police Department budget requires a hundred and four thousand dollar amendment due to revised police pension and contribution. The general fund fire budget requires a $3,800 amendment due to higher-than-anticipated personnel costs. The risk management fund requires a $25,000 amendment due to higher-than-anticipated claims and new cybersecurity training costs. Claims will be offset by additional reimbursements from the village's risk management pool. Village Board reviewed these amendments at the April fourteenth work session with agreement to include the amendments for approval at this meeting on April twenty eighth. Staff recommends the Village Board consider approving the attached budget amendment resolution at the April twenty-eighth meeting. So I now make a motion to approve a resolution amending the fiscal year 2020, 2019-20 budget.
Second.
The motion is second? Motion is second? Uh, discussion, Trustee Messick?
Again, Mr. President, uh, after all, a lot of hard work by, uh, by staff and, and discussion by the Finance Committee, uh, we've all done some good work. This is, it's necessary, and I fully support it.
Trustee Zora?
Again, I support it. No additional comments.
Trustee Sheehan?
Full support, Mr. President.
Trustee Seidel?
I support this as well.
Trustee Casera?
Fully support tremendous work in difficult times. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support.
Great. And again, great job again. So, Megan, call the roll, please.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan.
That concludes Finance Committee report and action items, Mr. President. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Messick, again, for you and your committee's work. Uh, moving on to other reports, Village Clerk, Megan.
I, I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Village Treasurer, Larry? No report tonight, Mr. President. Commercial Realization, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, two items to, uh, report on this evening. Uh, first item, business inquiries have slowed substantially due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. The majority of the Greens Park businesses have been closed since mid-March, although those that are open, permitted to remain open, have been innovated and are approached to providing service during this pandemic. Gilasco, Dollar Tree, and Ace Hardware continue to do well as most of our restaurants. Second item, village staff has been engaged in a modified business outreach program, contacting each of our businesses to check on, in on them to see how they're doing. The village has also conducted outreach to the Greens Park Chamber of Commerce and maintains a page on their website dedicated to small business resource related to the COVID-nineteen, uh, pandemic. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make one or two short comments, if I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, um, reading this report, uh, without a concern and everybody worried about where we're gonna come out, um, I read this as so positive with our businesses looking forward and figuring this out. Uh, there's actually been a lot of businesses here that, uh, have been mentioned and many that have not, that are looking to, uh, say, uh, we're gonna get better and survive after this instead of, I'm done. I don't believe in, in those two words. Uh, secondly, regarding our restaurants, um, thank you to our residents and residents of, uh, surrounding communities that have continued to support them. Uh, we have Jason, the postal thirty-one, that had to quit delivering because he needed to go to pure curbside delivery because of his, uh, business. And, um, good and bad, uh, when I look to go to Matona and sit there and offer a little carryout, I have to wait a little longer. Uh, I think those are great pieces, and when you look at business in our community, uh, it doesn't get, uh, any better than that. Um, that concludes my comments, Mr. President. Uh, I thank you very much. I thank, uh, our businesses and I thank the village of the Greens Park residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Casera, for all the work you've done, too. Okay, so moving on, Village Engineer, Mark?
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Our Village Attorney, Mr. Keating?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to approve committee and Congress reports as presented. So, Alvin Taylor?
Second.
Aye.
Alvin Taylor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
I just have a couple items. Um, maybe we're gonna go to the proclamations right away. Get you guys thinking here. Okay, the first one is the Municipal Clerk's week. It's Megan's week, really, is what we're calling it. Uh, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the holiest among public servants, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between citizens and local governing bodies and agencies of government at all levels, whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the professional clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Uh, therefore, we further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Megan Quaid, to all Professional Municipal Clerks and businesses they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. And Megan, we wanna thank you for all the work you do and, and continue on. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
And the next one is Arbor Day. Oh, you're welcome. Arbor Day, twenty-twenty. Um, in nineteen eighteen-seventy-two, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious tax soil by wind and water, caheterian and cooling costs moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, whereas trees in the Grange Park increase property values and hence the economic dichotomy of this area and beautify our community, whereas the Village of La Grange Park has designated a Tree City USA for thirty-three years by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, be it, uh, cause of the feel of the Grange Park, the Village of La Grange Park encourages officers to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. There's one action item that I have. So, I'll ask Trustee Messick, if you care to read it for me?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is to approve an ordinance extending the state of emergency declared by Village President Jim DiCipio on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty for the purposes of responding to COVID-nineteen outbreak as necessary. At the April fourteenth work session, the Village Board approved ordinance number eleven-twenty-seven amending the municipal code of the Village of La Grange Park to add section thirty-seven point two-one point one, Village President's authority to declare a state of emergency. Amendment better aligned the village's municipal code to authority granted municipalities under state law. On April twenty-second, twenty-twenty, the Village President issued a declaration of local state of emergency for the Village of La Grange Park in light of the impact of COVID-nineteen on the Village of La Grange Park, its residents, businesses, and property owners. Declaration allows the President to utilize executive orders to exercise the power and authority of the corporate authorities of the village as may be reasonably necessary to respond to the emergency. Any state of emergency declared pursuant to section thirty-seven point two-one point one of La Grange Park Municipal Code shall expire no later than the adjournment of the first regular meeting of corporate authorities after the state of emergency has been declared and in accordance with state law. Therefore, an ordinance extending the state of emergency has been prepared for the Village Board's consideration, positioning the village to seamlessly respond to emergent issues as they arise during the crisis. At this moment, then, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance extending the local state of emergency.
Second.
Have a motion, second? No second?
Second, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, discussion, Trustee Messick?
Uh, we're all doing our best. I fully support this. It, it's something that needed, uh. I think the, the key thing is to communicate to residents, which has been done. Yeah, I'm not understand, somebody's not trying to seize power here, but, but to simply protect residents, I think you've done a great job, Mr. President. I support it.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Zora?
I fully support this, and we're in difficult times right now, and I think this is necessary. Thank you.
Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for all you do. I support this. Difficult times, we'll get through this.
Trustee Seidel?
I concur with everyone's comments. I support this as well.
Trustee Casera?
We thank you, Mr. President. Um, I am one-hundred percent supportive. Um, I think we have leadership in Washington. I hope we have leadership in Illinois, uh, but most importantly, we have tremendous leadership in, uh, La Grange Park, and we give you full authority to make decisions for the best of it.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Trustee Lotner, I know that you have comments.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, yes. Uh, while I certainly have all the confidence, uh, and the support of yourself in this role, I'm a little concerned that, um, it, 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 um, it doesn't expire. It, it goes on the way the, the new resolution is, is, um, is written. And while I'm not concerned about your leadership in any way, shape, or form in, in that vein, um, having it be open-ended does raise a little bit of concern to me that I think it's a serious enough move and resolution that in my mind would justify looking at it every month, not necessarily every meeting, but, you know, as, as, as it's written, as it was originally written, it would expire at the, at the next full meeting. Now, it's expired. We have a recommended, uh, we have a motion and a recommended, uh, resolution that would go forward, um, with, without, eh, eh, without any, uh, any expiration date or anything, so it would have to take a proactive action by yourself or the Board. I guess all I'm saying is I'd like to see something that we would review this every month through this timeframe, um, to ensure that, that the continuation of that rule of, uh, of a state of emergency would, would, would continue. So, I think it's a serious enough, uh, resolution that in my mind just applies looking at it every month at, at the full meeting.
Yeah, I mean, the great comments, Trustee Lotner, I, I support. I mean, anything the Board would feel comfortable doing. Um, we have, I mean, Julia, the great staff, and Emily, and, and everything we do here is very transparent and, and with you guys, but I see where you're coming from, and, and I'm okay whatever the Board decides they wanna do. I think it showed with the face mask that we, um, we communicated that Julia called every Board member, uh, prior to us instituting it. I called the night before to make sure it was okay with all of you, um, and that's where we, that's where we really strive, is a communication transparency among all of us on this Board. Um, so, any other comments from any, any other trustees? I'd appreciate hearing from you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Trustee Casera?
It's Trustee Sheehan, Mr. President.
Trustee Sheehan, I'm sorry, I don't see your picture, but thank you. Trustee Sheehan?
Uh, no problem, sir. I'd like to hear, uh, Village Attorney Keating has any thoughts on this, that, that.
Well, I think there's no legal right or wrong to this thing. You can have it extend generally, or you could have it expire at the next regular, the, the meeting at the end of May. Either way.
Well, i- i- if we were going to have it expire at the end of the May meeting, um, the motion would have to be reworded. Am I correct?
Yes. So, the May meeting is May twenty-sixth. So, you could... Let me grab that resolution just a second. In section two of the ordinance, um, all we would do is, uh, write in the date, May twenty-sixth. Over, I mean, difficulty with that is missed a few Board meetings in March because we weren't able to convene as a Board, and I hate to have this thing end, and then for some reason all hell breaks loose, and we don't have a May twenty-sixth meeting. So, I guess at that point, Jim would have the authority to extend it by executive order.
Okay, I, I guess, listening to Trustee Lotner's comment, you know, I'm not worried about current Village President, but down the road, you know, that, that does kinda ring a bell. Um, yeah, Jerry times, but I see whatever the rest of the Board says. Thank you both.
Okay, Trustee Messick?
Uh, I fully, uh, understand Trustee Lotner's comments, and, and I agree with that, and I get the attorney's comments, too, so I... Maybe we do it every other month, in case something breaks down, but I do, we should, for, um, for, for total openness to the, to the public, review it every month if we can. Uh, if we can't, you should have the authority to extend it until the next regular meeting. I, I think it's a good thing, but we, you know, we do want the residents to be, uh, to be assured that, that this is not some kind of power grab, and I agree with my fellow trustees that this is not a reflection on the current President. Thank you.
Trustee Zora?
If I could offer, uh, a thought? Yeah, if, if I, if I could offer a thought, um, the way the resolution is written now could stand with the commitment, it would be on the next meeting's agenda for our discussion and potential change or continuation. So, it, so as written, it would, would work as long as there's a commitment that we would have it on the next meeting agenda.
So, in two weeks?
I agree, Bob. This is, or, or the next end of the month, end of May meeting. I, I think that's a better way to go, whether you have the staff bring it up in two weeks or four weeks.
Right, with, so, so the next full meeting, the next, um, regular meeting, with a commitment that it's on, it's on the agenda, then we can discuss and decide if we wanna continue or, or cease.
Trustee Zora?
I think that's fine with me. I'm okay with that. Obviously, again, not a reflection of our current President, but I think that's fine.
Trustee Sheehan, did you make comments? I can't remember. I'm sorry.
I was right after, uh, Trustee Lotner, sir. I'm good.
You're good? Okay, Trustee Seidel?
Uh, I'm good with Kathy's recommendation and what the other trustees said. Um, I think, you know, the end of May is fine, so I support that.
Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I agree with my fellow trustees, uh, but at the same time, um, I think you mentioned it, and you talked about transparency, uh, regarding the, uh, the face mask situation. Uh, you talked to all of us beforehand. Um, I, I really believe you need to have the authority for, um, executive action. Um, our meetings can be two or four weeks apart, and I think sometimes based on what's going on in this fast-moving world with this virus, um, we, we may need to make decisions faster than that, so, um, I'm really in agreement, but at the same time, I, uh, fully support your authority for executive action, uh, especially since you consult all of us beforehand, one-on-one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Um, and the motion was to approve an ordinance extending the local state of emergency. Um, we can call the roll, or if somebody wants to add, or substituting that motion, we can do it at this time? Or amend the motion?
Um, as an amended motion, could we add motion to approve the ordinance extending the local state of emergency to be reviewed at the next full?
Second.
Uh, can I ask a question? This is Kathy. It's not clear what you mean by the next full Board meeting. Do you mean in two weeks or four weeks?
Four weeks.
Okay.
The regular meeting.
Okay, so say that one more time for me, Trustee Lotner, please.
A motion to approve ordinance extending the local state of emergency to being reviewed. The motion to approve ordinance extending the local state of emergency to be reviewed at the next regular board meeting.
May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, is it a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Can I raise a legal point?
Is there discussion or not?
There is discussion on the motion to amend.
Okay. Trustee Lotner?
I wanted to point out that there's, there's a potential ambiguity there. If we say the next regular, regularly scheduled board meeting, May twenty-sixth, and that board meeting is not able to be held, then it's ambiguous whether the resolution or the ordinance expires by itself because you couldn't hold the meeting. See what I mean?
So, should we drop the, um, specific date?
I, I personally think the phrase regularly scheduled board meeting is a little bit ambiguous, because you all know that the last meeting of the month is the regularly scheduled board meeting, but the general public looks at board meetings every two weeks, so I think that could be confusing to the members of the public.
So, currently scheduled for?
Or can we say the last meeting of the month?
We could, or else we could just, you as a board could instruct the staff to please put it on the agenda of the, either the May twenty-sixth meeting, or if that meeting is canceled, the next meeting after that, because it may be June. That's what I mean. And I would leave the ordinance as it stands, personally. I think it's clearer that, that way, and then we're not gonna have any arguments about whether this thing expired at the end of May or not.
I would be comfortable with that, and with, with staff's, um, commitment to put it on the agenda, sure. So, do I formally need to, uh, retract my, uh, um, my second motion? Amended motion?
I think you just withdraw your amendment.
Yeah, we have the amendment.
I, I, I'd like to withdraw my, um, amended motion.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion, and any other comments? Okay, seeing that, Megan, will you call the roll? Then the motion is...
Trustee Messick?
Approve an ordinance extending the local state of emergency.
Trustee Messick, yes.
Go ahead, Megan, I'm sorry.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
I approve.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. And to my board, I hope I'm still sitting here in four weeks.
Oh, come on.
Oh, oh, no, we're good, we're good. You will be proudly. Thank you. Um, I just have one other item, and that's to thank David Carafa, who's doing the audio portion of our meeting tonight, so thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Public participation? Any public participation out there? Any new business? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all of favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Everyone have a great evening, a great...
Mm-hmm. You, too.